I don't even know if we have an indication on special meetings.
I don't think we do.
Hey, we don't have placement. Okay, good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Nacogdoches Independent School District. Ooh, there's echo. Okay. Let the record show that a quorum of board members, actually all of the board members are present. And then notice that this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Acts. All board members are present. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in the order shown on the agenda and please join us in turning off your cell phones or switching them to silent mode. We do have a very limited board meeting tonight. It's really to take care of a couple of resolutions and discuss a couple of resolutions. And then we will go into executive session after that and do some hires and a few things like that. So it's not going to be a very lengthy meeting tonight. We're going to start the new year off good. We'll begin nice meeting with the recently released accountability rating and I call on Shontae Davis for that presentation.
I want to brag on Shontae for a second. She's our in-house expert on accountability. Yes, she is. And so she studies this very hard and she knows the material, I think, better than the state or region seven. They ask her quite often if this is correct. But I want to thank her for digging down because we haven't had much time since we received the information. And so she started working on this and I'm very proud of what she's come up with. So, Shontae.
Okay.
Before you get started, do we have somebody working on?
He's working on that.
Echo? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frye. Still kind of echoing.
Just got a little bit.
There you go. Sounds good now.
Good evening, President Green, board members, Mrs. Dowdy. I'm here this evening to give us some preliminary information on the upcoming A through F school accountability system in House Bill 2804. They require changes to the school, public school academic accountability system. This won't be in place officially until the 2017, 2018 school year. But they wanted to be so nice to us and provide us with some advanced information as to how we would look with this accountability system utilizing our scores and other data from the previous year. In your package, you should see two things. One of them, I think, Mrs. Dowdy had already sent to you. It's a chart showing all of our campuses as well as the district and what letter grade we would have achieved on the different domains. You notice there is a change in terminology. We have been talking about indexes and indices. Now they are changing those to domains because the calculations of those are going to be a little bit different. Also, you'll see a quick look, which is a color document. And this is the one I'm sure that you'll want to have for easy reading as you retire tonight or tomorrow night. It actually shows each of the domains and how those are calculated. It also has a pie chart in the bottom right corner. It shows you the percentages of each of those domains in calculating the overall score that you'll, that we'll receive. We will have in the new accountability system, five different domains that are rated and then also an overall score. Now, I was preparing to do my long spiel of how these are calculated and what information is included. But we were very lucky that we received two PowerPoints that actually very quickly go through that information. So I'm going to turn that over to, I guess, Lisha. And we'll view one is two and a half minutes, one is five minutes. But I think it very quickly goes over each of the domains. And so you can follow along with your colored sheet as to how these domains are calculated, what type of information they utilize in each one. Over. I'll move to the left.
Thanks for tuning in to learn more about current progress on Texas' proposed A through F school accountability model. The Texas Legislature mandated that all schools be rated on one of five different levels, A, B, C, D, or F. Much like students get grades in several subjects and then an overall GPA, each school will be given A through F grades based on five different areas of performance, what we call domains, and then an overall grade. The tentative proposal has the grades working as follows. Schools will be graded in the first domain based on student achievement, which we think of as how many kids pass. Schools are also graded on student progress, which we think of as how much better students get year over year. For the overall grade, we'll first choose the better rating of student achievement or student progress. That is then combined with how well the school does relative to its level of student poverty, how well the school does preparing students for college, career, or the military, and finally, how the school district evaluates its own school's performance. The combination of these five individual domains will become the campus's overall A through F grade. In preparing the proposed design for the new A through F accountability model, we wanted to adhere to two philosophical commitments. First, we do not want the allocation of grades to be a forced distribution, meaning that there shouldn't be a guaranteed percentage of Fs or As. It should be mathematically possible for every campus in the state of Texas to get an A. Second, we want some degree of stability in the model rather than having goalposts that constantly change. This means that an A in year one should be the same as an A in year five, so parents and teachers can make good apples-to-apples comparisons over time regarding how well we are improving our support for students. This process is all ongoing. These ratings don't take effect until August of 2018. Eighteen months before that, in January 2017, a draft release of a proposed approach will be given to the legislature for further review during the legislative session. We will continue to gather input from parents, teachers, and others over the next year until the transition to the new A through F accountability system is finalized. For more detailed information on how grades are calculated for each domain, please visit the DEA website. Welcome to part two of our A... Welcome to part two of our A through F accountability intro series. If you'll remember from part one, the new system, scheduled to take effect in August of 2018, will give grades to schools based on five performance areas, or domains, and then be combined for an overall grade. This video provides information on the preliminary proposal for calculating grades in each of those domains. The first domain reflects student achievement based on the STAR test. The STAR defines four different performance levels for the exam, each with a public label that parents and students see. To make this all less confusing, DEA has recently proposed new labels for these thresholds, each of which is based around research on what it means for a student to be on grade level. Since the STAR exam was built and validated by actual student performance, students who achieve a score that meets grade level by the end of high school have a better than 60% chance of passing freshman college-level math and English courses. Students who achieve a score that masters grade level by the end of high school have better than a 75% chance of passing these courses. The proposed model takes a percentage of students that score approaches or above, meets or above, and masters, and averages them out to get the domain one score. When thinking about what equals an A grade, the agency tried to identify an appropriate benchmark based on what would best position students for future success. The state's 60-by-30 Texas Plan provides that benchmark and is aligned with work being done in Texas colleges and to the needs of the workforce. The goal is straightforward. By the year 2030, 60% of Texans aged 25 to 34 should possess some form of post-secondary credential. To align with this plan, the cutoff point for an A for domain one would be set at 60%. The current proposal for domain two examines the improvement in each child's score on STAR from one year to the next. Students who gain enough points to maintain the same level of proficiency as the year before are designated as having met expected growth. Students who gain enough points to move up a proficiency level are designated as having accelerated growth. Students who do not maintain their same level of proficiency will be designated as having grown below expected. When determining a campus's domain two score, one point will be awarded for each student who reaches expected growth, and two points for each student that reaches accelerated growth. Points are then added up for all students to calculate a campus's score. For domain three, our proposed approach examines how campuses are doing in terms of student achievement for their economically disadvantaged populations. To illustrate this, let's take a look at this graph and assume that these gray dots represent all the elementary schools in Texas. On the vertical axis, you see higher student achievement on STAR towards the top. On the horizontal axis, you see higher proportions of economically disadvantaged students towards the right, which is measured by how many students are eligible to receive free and reduced-price lunch. There is a line that can be drawn that represents what is average for a campus in Texas. And it shows that campuses with higher levels of student poverty typically have lower levels of student achievement. Compare the green and red dots. The green dot has higher levels of achievement than the red dot on an absolute scale, but both are performing precisely average given their levels of student poverty. However, as all educators know, poverty is not destiny. There are campuses throughout the state that see high levels of student achievement, even with high levels of student poverty. As such, those campuses will be given an A for domain three because they are performing well above average and closing gaps. Moving forward, the state will set benchmark cut points based on average performance during the 2016, 2017 school year. And those cut points will remain in place so all campuses have an opportunity to demonstrate improvement over time. Domain four, which determines how well campuses are preparing students for post-secondary success, relies on indicators that do not pertain to the STAR exam. At the elementary and middle school level, performance is based on chronic absenteeism rates. Middle school will also factor in the dropout rate. The agency engaged in extensive conversations with educators and parents to determine whether additional indicators should be used, but no suitable alternatives could be found. At the high school level, domain four will be based partially on the graduation rate and partially on the percentage of students graduating with a higher-level graduation plan. But it will also examine the percentage of students who graduate ready for either college, career, or the military. Readiness for college is shown if a graduate has done well on the ACT, SAT, and other related exams, passed college-level dual-credit coursework, completed a technical education course, or successfully enlisted in the military. The fifth domain is the result of the school district's own evaluation of its students' performance, and it is entirely up to the local district to define. This concludes our in-depth look into the current proposal for how each domain will be calculated in the new A through F accountability system. For more information, please visit the A through F resources page in the accountability section of our website at tea.texas.gov.
Okay, that's just a general overview of how those different domains are calculated. You'll see some differences between the indices and the domains. For example, indices one, you are index one, you had two areas where you could earn points, whereas in domain one, you now have three areas where you can gain points. What you've seen as we've looked at some of the information, we have a greater advantage when it comes to closing the performance gap than some of the other districts. Because if they're already scoring up in the 80th or 90th percentile in those areas, they don't have very far to go. So we're able to gain... So we're able to gain more points and be able to score at a higher rate there utilizing the system. There's 18 months before the system will be in place. There will be quite a few changes between now and then. We did have the opportunity yesterday to talk to A.J. Cravill. Our specific question was how this was going to affect our accountability as far as our IR campuses. You know, we're working very hard for those campuses in two years to no longer be improvement required, but what does that look like using the new A through F system? Now, most people are considering that probably a D or F rating, overall rating, would be considered improvement required, but that's not in stone as of yet. This is going to be a system that's going to continuously change. You've been looking at print media, television, Facebook, you see that there are a lot of other districts, along with nacogas ISD, who are not real confident in the system that they've developed, and so there will be tweaks to it as we go along. What do we do at this point? We continue to focus on the goals that you all have been working on, and when we create those goal performance measures, those will be the things that Mr. Cravill says that that will be where we need to focus our attention, our resources, and move toward improving student achievement for all of our students. As far as the point system, you'll see that in a couple of the domains. The more students that were able to move up above that Phase Two standard, the more points we'll be able to get, and the higher we'll get a rating for that, for those areas. We need to continue use of our instructional rounds to make sure that instruction is at a high level and that is rigorous. We need to continue with our PLCs, our professional learning communities, so that our teachers become more confident with the curriculum as well as their instructional strategies. And we need to do our very best to maintain quality staff in the district so that we're not continuously reteaching teachers how to teach in the classroom. The main thing is to keep our focus on student progress. You also have in your packet, I believe, something that had been requested. It's other school districts and how they scored. And you see that we are not alone.
And can I say, I threw in a variety of schools. I wanted you to see, Russell, I think you had asked, you know, like our peer, so we picked the Elite Eleven, as we're called, you know, the eleven districts in the state that are under the governance issues. So you've got those scores. Then I threw in one for fun, and that's Eames ISD. It's just like Highland Park, that poverty are, they don't have economically disadvantaged. So you can see the difference in the middle there. I just wanted you to see that. And then below, I also included the local districts, so you can see a full range. Okay? So.
I see what you're doing on the comparison with the local districts, but outside of Lufkin, I don't know that you can really compare. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we could identify a handful, maybe six or seven districts that are of similar size, but more importantly, similar economic disadvantaged EL percentages so that we can start having a true, true comparison. And let's look for those successful districts.
I know, that's what Shontay and I, when we worked together. We, I just wanted to give you this picture.
No, I appreciate this.
But we need to find those districts. Our goal is to find those districts like us and look at what they're doing. Because if they're doing well in an area, then we can go and see what they're doing compared to. It's more of a comparison for us.
Yes.
So that's what we will be doing. Okay?
And you'll also see back on the chart that shows our school district, we do have some campuses that did a commendable job in some of those areas, so we'll be looking to replicate some of the things that they're doing with their students.
I do note that our sister city to the south is out, out, outperforming us there.
They are. Let me find it here. Yes.
Let me ask you, Shontay, I'm curious, we have heard a lot in the media in the last week or so since, since the state started releasing this information. And I know at one of our trainings, A.J. kind of forewarned us and said, "Don't get too worried when you see this. This is preliminary. This is, this is preliminary, and we don't really know what all it's going to look like or how, how those things are going to come out." But based on the videos we just watched, I have a little bit of a different perspective from the perspective that he gave us in that workshop, and that is, they do have a formula here created, but now they're going back to seek community input on what they did, which is a little different from what I feel like I heard in that workshop. Am I correct in this latter assessment, that they've pretty much got their formula down, they're just now opening it up for a time of community input?
Well, I think I see it as a proposed way to calculate each of those areas, but now that they have put the actual data in, it's much like when we initially start a new testing or assessment, when we moved from tax to STAR. Initially, this is where the cut points were going to be, but then when we got the results, they went back and recalculated it, and then your standards would come lower. And so I think that's going to be something that's going to be happening in the next 18 months, is that they're going to be looking at how this actually shook out and examining areas where it was not really accurate. One of the places in the calculations for the chronic absenteeism, they actually use last year's absentee data, when in essence, we usually use the previous year. So it's just little tweaks that they did that were incorrect at the time, so they're going to be continuing to, to work on the system. And I assure you, with some of these districts that are exemplary, that are blue ribbon schools, they're going to have to do something to correct how it's aligning itself. It's not going to stay exactly like it looks now. But that does not remove the responsibility, you know, that we need to continue working toward those goals and the goal performance measures that we're planning to put in place so that our students can be more successful. We've identified our areas of need. When the team came in and went to our IR campuses, we know where we need to focus. We need to focus on early literacy. We need to focus on widening. And so we just need to continue working in those areas, and I think that we'll see the improvement that is needed. I had mentioned in the principals' meeting this morning, we look at these scores now, and we're very upset where we are, but this is sort of like when I used to be the testing coordinator. Everybody would get all excited about, "I wonder how we did? I wonder how we did?" Well, basically, when you put those tests in the box and you tape them and FedEx picks them up, it's a done deal. So right now, based on the information that they use to make these calculations, it's a done deal, but they will be tweaking the system because it did not turn out surely like they had expected it to turn out.
And can I add to that? We're watching, as this happens, like Shontay said, they've gone back and used last year's scores for this. Well, if you remember, last year's testing was a debacle.
Yes.
Because of the testing companies. Some of the scoring and everything was wrong, so we've already watched them send out an email, "Sammy, help me, Sammy, help me with this," that we're not going to have the open-ended questions now.
For the high school.
For the high school, because they were mis-scorred so much last year, they, they didn't get a good feel, but yet we're, some of this is reflective of, of that type of data. So we're seeing some changing in the testing, and it's like Shontay said, when we go through the cycle of these accountability systems, depending on the year of election and everything else, we've watched those standards move. It's not, it's not been kept consistent from year to year. So it's like a moving target, but you're going to see some changes in this because this has not been acceptable by the state. When it came out, and you're seeing school districts that have the national blue ribbon schools and all, and the scores that came out, when those are Fs and Ds, there's something...
So you're saying there's a fundamental problem with the formula they use to calculate the scores?
Some of that, as well as you're going to see some changing in the testing itself and how they, or the doc, the testing questions, you're going to see some of the changes in them.
Do you have examples of some of the school districts that are blue ribbon school districts that had failing, failing state?
One in Austin, Blackshire Elementary, I've watched that for years, and that was a, a campus that was in desperate problems. And so they worked very hard in the district to get that school to improve. They won national blue ribbon, I believe it was last year, and the score came back as an F in an area that, I mean, the superintendent's like, "How, how can you..." When we, we won national ribbon, but yet you're giving us a failing grade. So, so it's hit some of those campuses that it's just not matching up to what they show, that they have made progress on.
Yeah.
And I can get some more, but that's one.
Well, and that's interesting because one of my, one of my, one of my initial impressions is trying to dive into it and figure out, is it that school districts are, you know, ringing the bell of alarm because the performance isn't what they want it to be, or is there truly a fundamental underlying problem in the calculations? And that, those are two completely different scenarios.
Right.
And actually, in, I'm sorry, in the webinar that I viewed with John Fessenden with Account, Accountability Connect that we worked with, Lee Forward, he identified some of those areas where the mathematical calculations, the actual premise behind the creation of those calculations was a bit flawed.
Okay. And so we would, I'm sorry.
When we have more-
We've got two things. We've got the underlying test that's questionable, and then the validity of the way the metrics were constructed.
And this is one of those systems where they were told, you know, within the two years since the last legislature, this is what we want to have in place, so they scrambled to put something together. Now they're going to have to refine that so that it actually gives us a true reflection, or at least a better reflection of what schools are achieving.
And that's why I think A.J. told us on the phone yesterday, and what we're trying to tell everybody, be calm. This is the beginning of this, and if you've been through a lot of these like we have, it's like you've seen this cycle before, you know that things are going to change. They always have, and this is just the beginning phase of it. And like you said, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of changes before you see it come back out in its final phase in 2018. And I truly believe it because it's been, it's happened in every accountability system I've been through. So this is just, this probably, this is the first one, like Shontay and I were talking, I've usually, over all these decades, it's usually been about 10 years before they changed the accountability system. We've gone through 10 years. This time, we just started this STAR, the current accountability system, in 2011, 12, when they were, actually were giving us scores. And so they're changing this rapidly into another system where we've gone, we haven't been in it five, four years with scores yet. They withheld them for the first two years. So this is jumping into one quickly where we haven't mastered the other. So there's going to be a lot of change, I guarantee you, on this.
And it's also including calculations based on the phase-in of the standards for the testing. We haven't even gotten to, in all areas, the final standard for the testing, and we're already trying to use it for accountability. So there's some issues all around the system.
They'll, they'll fix the flaws or come out with another.
The thing that kind of confuses me is, I'm sitting here trying to figure out how, just for example, under NISD where it says score 31. I've sat here now for a few minutes using their calculations to figure out how we got to 31. And I'm confused. I guess I need some, a little more, I may need your assistance, a little more tutoring to figure out how we've got to 31 and how we got this, where the 36 and the negative 6.2, how those are arrived at. I'm reading the calculations, and what kind of befuddles me a little bit is they said they wanted a simple system that parents would understand. My God, this is a-
Well, it's gotten more complicated. I mean, there's no, from the time that the testing accountability system started, what, 50 years ago or 45 years ago, when it was simple, pass or not pass, it has gotten more complicated with each accountability system, and this in no way is easier than even the last one we had to explain. The formulas get to where, when we can't explain the formulas, it's a little difficult to think that parents are going to understand it.
I guess I need to come to your office and see how, and get a, get the scores out, and let's see how we got to 31.
Yes.
I mean, I need to see like, and I don't know if, and I'm not sure as a board, it's our responsibility to overdo that, except I kind of need to, as a board, I would like to at least have an understanding of, I mean, it's not my responsibility to come up with that score, it's y'all's, but I'd like to at least have an understanding of what we're dealing with.
And that's something-
The moving parts.
And that's something we're also, the more that we know or learn about this as we go along, like we said, we just got the information last week, and Shontay's learned as much as she can through videos and through calling and working with different people. As we go through the system, that's what we have to learn, is how the formulas work, and then explain that, and the principals have to understand the formulas. So we've got to, we've got to do tutorials on, on that, once we thoroughly understand them ourselves, once they're finalized.
So y'all understand it well enough to explain it to us?
Along with John Fessenden's tutorial.
John's the guru in the state that understands the formulas.
The only thing is that the webinar that we viewed the other day, it was based on what he was projecting was going to be, how it was calculated. Now that we have more information, we can actually see how it was calculated. It comes down to, though, we've got to improve our student achievement, we've got to get kids, do whatever is necessary to get kids to make not just one year of growth, but a majority of our kids to make a year and a half or two years worth of growth. And so whatever it takes for that, additional instructors during the school day, extended day, better resources, more training for our teachers, we're just going to have to put our resources where they're necessary for us to improve that. It comes down to moving those kids that are close to the higher expectation up, and then those kids that are behind, getting them moved forward. They're going to have to make up that gap.
It's what you've been listening to me in the Friday mailouts when I send, we have, it's, it sounds so simple, why don't you just do it? Teach what you test and test what you teach, but it's more difficult than you have any idea, you know, to get all that done. But the other part is, when you're looking at curriculum, and you should judge your curriculum by how, how well your top students do. If your top students are not knocking the top out of the test, then something's not happening back in the classrooms as far as what its teaching strategies or the expectations are. Because we measure by how well those, those high students do. And right now, I'm telling you, our highest-level students are not where they need to be, and it's reflecting on this accountability, because that's where we're going to get a lot of points, is how well we move those kids more toward college-ready. When we look at our measure of our top-level students, they're not knocking the top out of the test. Okay?
And I'm going back, I'm remembering some discussion at our last workshop on that. You said you've got to raise the performance of the top-level students, and you said when you do that, you naturally, there's a natural implication to the bottom half?
You're, you're raising your expectations across the board for students in the curriculum. Yeah. When you see that move, that bar move, and the, the teaching strategies in the classroom, because when you're reaching, when you're using strategies to get those students, you're not changing those strategies, the same strategy should be used at the lower level, too. But when we get teachers to that level of using the correct strategy in classrooms, you're going to see it all rise.
It scares me a little bit when I hear you say things like, you know, our high-level students need to be performing higher, because it scares me because I'm, I'm worried about all of our kids, not just the high-level kids.
Sure.
It's a scary statement to hear that, because I'm, without our other kids.
And what I talk about is how you're judging your curriculum. That's what I was taught a long time ago by some very influential curriculum people, that you've got to look, I mean, your curriculum, if you're not, your top students are knocking, then- then your, your, your curriculum is missing, period. Your teaching strategies are not there in the classrooms, and so you do judge by that, and you will see the whole level rise when you start teaching to those types, because you're, you're, you're also going to increase your expectations for the lower levels, it's, it, you know, of students. You can't, you're right, we've got to teach wrong, but we've got to raise the expectations for all students. That's telling you our expectations are not where they need to be when that top level's not where it needs to be. It's just not there, and we're not there yet.
You create a glass ceiling.
Yeah.
Well, the rigor that we need.
It's not there.
And not to, you know, trivialize this or be flippant about it, it's much like when you have a school district and the basketball team at so-and-so high school always makes it to the playoffs, and it's because they've set a standard for high achievement. Those kids that are seniors and juniors have those expectations for the other students. The coaches have a certain expectations for all of the team members, and it just becomes a culture, and we don't have that culture yet of high achievement for everyone. When you have a district that is used to go into the playoffs every year, that's the expectation from the community, from the parents, from the students, teachers, coaches, everyone, and so we're having to build that, and gradually we'll get there.
But we've got to keep the focus, like Chantae said, and when we sit in meetings, we know that we can't go scurrying and screaming and, and panicking. We've got to keep, and we talked about today with the principals, we've got to stay focused on what we know we have to improve, and there's no other way to accomplish it. If everybody panics, we won't get where we need to be, for sure.
You know, some of these formulas, we may never know how they're derived, but, but some of these are internal, like for example, economically disadvantaged, that's at eighty-one point two here. I've seen that number as high as, and I'm sure that's a huge factor in determining these other numbers, it has to be. I've seen that number in the high eighties, and I've, that number seems to fluctuate a lot here on our internal documents. Where do we get the eighty-one point two this time?
It's our free and reduced lunch rate, and that does fluctuate from year to year.
But will that, sorry to cut you off, but is that for one year, once it's figured, it's figured for the year?
Yes, yes, it's figured annually. That would be for last year, for last year's snapshot.
Thank you.
And I want to add to that, I truly, I've watched this for in other districts, I believe our number's much higher than that. It, it's, it's that when you get to high school, the middle school and high school, collecting the forms, because you know what I'm talking about, the kids do not want to be catered for, and they, and they shy away from filling out those forms and using it. But I'm telling you, our number's much higher than that, and we're looking at ways to do that in a manner that doesn't embarrass students or whatever, to get those correct, those numbers up, because that means money for the district, and it, and it shows a true picture then. But I, I believe that number is higher.
I agree.
Yeah.
Did you look on the page eight of this document of our board book? Look at, the whole feeder program goes into the high school.
Sure.
But look what the free and reduced is at the high school compared to, it's a thirteen percentage points lower.
So, you know.
Than it is for all the other campuses.
And, and that's kind of a natural thing you'll see in other districts, but there's dry, there's, there's ways you can get those numbers up correctly, and we need to look at that because...
Yeah, I think besides funding, there's a lot of reasons, especially with this A to F system, we need to have that more accurate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chantae.
I think we're at, I think we're at U of M.
You're at May, you're at May.